Okay. I'd like to call the January Town Meeting order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, we got a lot of people tonight. Anyone with cell phones, can you please put them on airplane mode or turn them off? We don't want them to go off during the meeting. Also, if you want to talk or have a question on an item that's on the agenda, please sign in on the sign-in sheet over there where Matty is. Matty's over there on the side there. If you want to speak on anything, doesn't matter, you don't have to if you come through it, but just in case you want to, please sign the paper. Also, if you do have a questions, please have your questions come to me and then I'll ask the people, whoever's doing the presentation. Now, I'll ask them your question. That way, there isn't an interaction, okay? Future meetings. Citizen Advisory Meeting is on Tuesday, January 15th, 2019 at 7:30 PM. Quarterly Planning Committee Meeting is Monday, January 28th at 7:30 PM. Town Council Meeting, the next one, will be Monday, February 4th at 7:30 PM. Any other meetings? Anybody have any other meetings they want to bring up?
Not at this time.
Glenn? You're okay. I also want to apologize, the mayor's not feeling well. He's going home, so he's here, but he's going, his wife's coming to get to him, he doesn't feel well. So, that's why his seat is empty. We'll start with the meeting agenda items. I need to approve the meeting minutes for the December 4th Town Meeting. Everybody look at the meeting minutes? Any changes or comments?
I had none.
None? Glenn? I need a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented?
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second's been made by Mr. Ritz. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. Please report. Deputy's not here.
Yeah, Deputy Whitehouse is delayed due to calls for service.
Really? Town Managers Report.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's Report for November of 2018. I'll highlight some of the key areas related to the streets. Staff and contractor finished installing the mobile radios that were approved in the town trucks. They conducted their monthly street sweeping. They put up Christmas decorations up around town and in front of the community center. They, staff came in and plowed and shoveled for a snow event in November. Related to the parks, staff winterized the park restroom buildings. Staff winterized water fountains and service line to the community park dog, uh, community park dog park. Staff cut down three old trees and planted new ones near the all-purpose field in the community park. And staff also assisted with the preparations for the turkey trot. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. You can see our well levels. We are in the positive in wells 1 through 5. During the month of November, well number 4 was shut off and well number 5 was turned on to allow less gallons per minute through the plant. Our lake quota is being met or being exceeded for that month. Water production and consumption, we produced an average of 270,530 gallons per day and consumed an average of 228,879 gallons per day. The difference between being 16.5 percent, which is backwash water. We were able to get 61.7 percent of the water that was produced in the month of November from the lake, which exceeds our goal. We purchased 423,950 gallons of water from the mount this month, or in the month of November. In the month of November, under wastewater, we received 8.6 inches of precipitation. The average is 3.63 inches. Therefore, we have a precipitation surplus of 30.52 inches over those six months. The six-month period runs from June 1st to November 30th. Wastewater treatment, because of the amount of rain that we've received, we retreat, we treated an average of 1,192,000 gallons per day and consumed only 228,879 gallons, which means 80.8, 80.8 percent of the water treated was wild water. We were fortunate, we did not have any spills of untreated sewage in the month of November. However, we did exceed the plant's design capacity 17 times in the month of December due to the large amount of rain. In January, trash pickup will remain on Mondays. As you can see, I highlighted some of the meetings that I attended in the month of November. Some noteworthy items, the Level 2 electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging equipment was installed at the rear of the community building and service will be connected to it within the next month or so. We had four, four new stations installed. Noteworthy, the wastewater treatment plant is struggling with the total nitrogen limit due to the cold weather in November and the excessive flows from the pumping station. Now that the weather's warmed up, we have gotten back to our limit, but it's a constant struggle because of the amount of rain. The transfer pump at the wastewater treatment plant ran, ran for most of the month to keep room in the EQ lagoons because of overflows, because of the amount of rain. For the bridge project, the lane shift at the bridge project will occur this month, probably in the next week or two. That was the last we heard, but that was the, the schedule prior to Christmas. The square revitalization project is wrapping up and actually, it's been completed. The state highways is making their final repairs off their punch list. However, the invoices for the damages that were, um, did occur to town, water lines and streetlights are still outstanding. The last notification I got in December was State Highway. The money's owed to the town will be split between State Highway and the contractor collectively. If we do not have any payment by the end of this month, we'll be sending another formal letter demanding payment. That is all that I have for the Managers' Report.
Do I have any questions for the Town Manager?
I, I do have a question. Since we have so much excess water in our wells, why do we buy from the mount when we have so much excess?
It keeps, it keeps the line from the mount to the town. If you don't buy the water, then the residuals back up and then the line will not work. If, if you recall, when we had the drought, not last summer, the summer before, we purchased more water from the mount and the whole idea is to keep that line operational.
Okay, good.
You want a continuous flow?
Right.
Right. And then one other question. A lot of the citizens of the town have noticed the water bills increased. Can you explain for people so they understand the minimums and then why maybe the, the price has gone up?
Well, the price, there's been no water rate change in the town of Emmitsburg in over a decade. The sewer rates increased in 2012 and 2014, I believe, is when the sewer rates increased. Your sewer rates are, are much higher than your water rates. So, your sewer usage is the same as your water usage, but because the rates are higher, that's why you see a higher sewer bill. But there's been no increases in any of the rates. We have installed new meters, water meters, over the last couple of years because many of our meters were old. The water meters are now reading accurately, but as far as any increases, there hasn't been any. Everybody is charged a minimum. The minimum is 6,000 gallons. And the reason that we do that is because of state mandates that we provide a certain amount of water to each residence and to provide that amount of water, whether or not you use it or not. There's fees that incurred to run our plants, to purchase the chemicals, to keep it in operation. I actually had staff reach out and every single municipality charges a minimum and every municipality charges for a vacant property. It's just the cost of providing the water service.
So, if someone were to ask you, oh, I had five people in my house, now I have three, why is my bill the same or bigger? How would you, what would you advise them to do?
I can't, I can't answer that because, well, they probably should check for a leak. Um, I know one person in particular, one person in particular, they have a higher bill. We call them, hey, we noticed that you have a higher usage this month or this quarter. You may want to check for a leak. And fortunately, they found out, hey, I got a leaky toilet. You wouldn't believe how much a leaky toilet will, will raise your water and sewer bill. So, that would be my recommendation. If your bill is higher and there's no other reasoning for it to be higher, call a plumber or check for a leak.
Okay.
And our staff, our water department staff, Reese Frye, she will walk you through everything. She'll explain everything to you. She is more than willing, she'd rather have you understand your bill and help you figure out what your problem is than you not understand.
And your leak might not be in your house. It could be past the meter.
Correct.
So, anything, it's been so much rain and everything now that, you know, you can't tell if there was a wet spot anywhere. So, if, if you might have one, if water goes through your meter still, you're going to be charged for it. If it's before the meter, you won't be, but it's after the meter, it gets charged.
Right. You could have pipes that are leaking under your ground, on your property. There's a whole variety of reasons why you could have a higher bill. So, call us and let us help you try to figure it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Is it okay to ask the Manager a question?
Yes.
Okay. Regarding the bridge accessibility, the new bridge, has any more firm date been identified when the lane switch might occur? I missed if you'd said that.
No. We had a meeting right before Christmas and they had poured the concrete and the concrete had to cure for 28 days.
Right.
So, we're speculating the second to third week of January, if, if all remained on schedule, that was when the lane shift would be. I have not spoken to her since I've been back to work yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ritz, do you have any question?
No.
Glenn?
Nope.
I don't have any more. It looks like the bridge is getting, they're working on the side of the bridges now. It looks like the main part of it is, in the middle is finished. They're working on the sides parts now.
Right. They had, they're transitioning and they were working on the other side and, so they are making progress. They asked for an exception to work several days over the holiday, so hopefully.
It'd be nice when it gets switched over.
I know.
Alrighty, we'll move on. Commissioner comments. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good news, I'm going to ask that we table the Trail Volunteer Workdays. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. The Town Planner's Report.
Oh, sorry.
Where's it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Jump right over it.
No problem. The Town Planner's Report for November 2018. I created a street closure ordinance with other amendments to Town Code Title 12 for Board Consideration Tonight. I created a street sidewalks and public places fee policy for Board Consideration Tonight. Updated the permits and inspection fees policy for Board Consideration also tonight. This has not been updated since 2004. Prepared amendments to Town Code Title 16 subdivisions. This is needed in order to update the review fees policy. This will be brought before the Board in the next couple of months. Updated the review fee policy for Board Consideration. This has not been updated since 1999. Prepared a second amendment to Chapter 15.24, which is trailers per Board request. This is going to be on your agenda here in a few minutes. Started preparing updates to the Sign Code. Spent a lot of time on that. We'll bring more back to you next month. For Community Legacy, fielded multiple resident questions regarding the facade grant. The facade grant, just for residents, information is closed now for 2019. We received over $58,000 in requests for nine applications. The local Board will review that, Sustainable Communities Board will review it on Wednesday and make recommendations and then we'll forward it to the State Review Committee. Let's see, for MS4, attended an all-day 14th Annual Maryland Association of Floodplain and Stormwater Managers Conference. Permits and zoning, processed and approved the following zoning applications, two roof replacements, a shed, a trailer, and six paved parking spaces required for use in occupancy permit. Planning Commission, worked with Frederick County Health Department and provided information needed for future subdivision and improvement plan approvals. Received, processed, and provided comment on a final subdivision plat, Section 3, lots 3, 4, and remainder north for Silo Hill. Attended the Planning Commission meeting. For the sidewalk and bridge, met with, with State Highway Administration, contractor and homeowner at 423 West Main Street regarding a complaint. That complaint was satisfied. Miscellaneous, processed the FEMA preliminary flood insurance study and flood insurance maps changes for the town. I mailed letters to six property owners potentially affected by the changes. I fielded multiple resident questions regarding those letters. Attended a GIS presentation by the county. Wrote a thank you letter for Kim Valentine for a park bench donation and landscaping to community park. I created an RFP request for excavation and cleaning of a storm drain and stormwater pipe located behind provincial parkway. Attended a department head and financial, financial meeting. Attended a FEMA preliminary insurance study, community outreach event, and I created a survey to solicit feedback for future art projects in and around town. We received a lot of feedback and I appreciate Commissioner Buckman for putting that on, on Facebook, so it was really successful. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Town Planner? Commissioner O'Donnell?
No questions. No, sir.
Commissioner Ritz?
No. Thank you.
Commissioner Blanchard? Commissioner Buckman? Okay, I don't have any either. Thank you. Zach? Now, we're going to Commissioner Comments. I'm sorry, I skipped over Zach.
No problem. We're good?
Yep.
Okay. I still have good news. Okay. In an effort to keep the meeting short, I'm going to ask that we table the Trail Volunteer Workday listings until a future meeting, so we'll hold off on that. I met with the Town Manager and the Town Accountant to review town financial management procedures. I met with the State Forester and other commissioners on the mountain regarding the forestry management plan that's for consideration tonight. That was a very useful meeting, very insightful. Met with Mayor Briggs and Thurmont Mayor John Coner to discuss a North County Outdoor Comprehensive Plan related to outdoor recreational assets. I met with the Board of Directors of the Frederick Bicycle Coalition regarding events in Emmitsburg they want to participate in and they want to sponsor. And my hope is the mayor gets better and I hope he's not suffering from the Alabama Clemson flu. So, just saying. And, and that's where I conclude my comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I actually have a question. Due to the mayor's absence, are we going to have a presentation for the Christmas decorations this evening?
You have the winners for the Christmas decoration?
Ms. Shaw has them. I would recommend that somebody take the reins, probably you, Commissioner Sweeney.
My second question to that, would it be permissible to, assuming there are a lot of public comments this evening, I know one of our business owners is, who won one of the prizes, I think is going to work this evening. Would it be possible to swap item H1, the announcement of the holiday decoration winners and the, and the public comments?
Okay.
I don't think HI, H Section 1 would take too long.
No.
Do we have to vote on that?
I don't think so. I mean, if it's consensus, everyone, is it okay to swap it?
Sure, absolutely. Sure.
Okay. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Very good.
Thanks.
Commissioner Buckman?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Just a couple of things, Mr. President. I was able to attend the Vigilance Host Company, Ben Guin, on Saturday night for behalf of the town. Thanked him on behalf of the Town Council, Vigilance Host Company, and they're coming together with the ambulance company. I thought it was a great idea. It was a good event. Got a chance to talk to County Council President Jan Gardner and meet the new County Council members that were elected. Hoping for next month's agenda, maybe so we can't get our new County Council individuals who are representing this area to kind of come to a meet and greet with us, since we do have new representation, so. And of course, attended the walk on the mountain with Commissioner O'Donnell, again, looking at the forestry plan of consideration. It was a rainy day, but it was useful to go up with a, and just check out the mountain and see where the trails are located and where the different sites were located for the different potential cuttings. So, there. It's okay.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Is it Tom? Mayor's not here. Public comment? We wanted to switch it over to the thing now.
You're going to do the...
Yeah, I guess I'll do the...
Do the holiday decorating.
Holiday decoration winners?
Yeah. I think they have a PowerPoint also that just kind of shows each winner's...
Okay. Is it in order the way they're in here? Are they in order to the...
If you look in the packet, too.
It's right here, huh? Don't wait.
Submeral's not here.
I didn't see them.
Yes, he is. He's hiding back there. I didn't see him.
Are you going to go with the presentation or do you want me to just announce the winners?
You should, you should...
Just announce the winners?
Yeah, just, if you look in your packet on page 14, I would just go down the list and announce the winners and they can come...
Alrighty, the, we had nine winners for the holiday decorating contest. For the most traditional, first place was Casey Quorda, Quada, 23 Federal Avenue. Does she hear? Come up here and get your touch. Yes. You hand them out and I'll read.
Congratulations.
Second place was Frank Submeral, 115 East Main Street.
Thank you.
I like the hobo on the roof. Nice touch. It was awesome.
Did you notice that the fire?
The fire glowed. Yes, it was, it was awesome.
Impressive.
My daughter is devious. You have to check this.
Honorable mention was Philip Thum, 429 Robinwood Drive, Ramblewood Drive, Ramblewood Drive.
There was no award for that one.
Okay. For the most decorative would be, first place would be Daniel Romero, 11414 Ramblewood Drive.
He's not here.
Oh, he's not here? Second place would be Edward Wance, 217 East Main Street. Are they here?
I like the fence, too.
Yeah, every year.
Honorable mention was William Machen, Machen, 1 Adam Avenue.
That's pretty cool.
Okay. Best Business, first place was Odd House.
Back to work.
Getting off work, is that it?
Second place is Carrie House.
I could take this to them if you'd like.
Honorable mention was Emmitsburg Family Barber and PNC Bank. They were a tie.
Nice.
The Emmitsburg EVPA would like to thank everybody for all their participation in the decorating contest and we hope for the, everybody comes back next year again.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what... Thank you. Public comments? Let me see here. Marie Williams? 437 West Lincoln Avenue? Can you come up?
We're all together.
Well, come up to the, and give your name and your address.
Okay. Marie Williams, 437 West Lincoln Avenue.
April Council Ring, 439 West Lincoln.
Ashley Council Ring, 439 West Lincoln.
Okay. Who's speaking?
Go ahead. All right. We're here tonight concerning the noise and the, um, that we're having the recent, well, anyway, in our street. We're having a lot of loud noise, drinking, disrespectfulness. We just, we're just at, we're here. We're, it's, the trash isn't being, being put out. So, we, we're next to a field, so here we have, you know, the mice and everything else coming in over to the other, you know, beside. April, you want to give anything else?
They're, they're in and out all hours of the night.
And we're talking about 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the mornings.
All the time.
All the time. And especially Friday and Saturday.
What address do they, is this happening to?
5, oh, 511, 11, West Main Street.
511 West Main Street.
Yes.
And what have you guys, have you called the deputies? What have you done to...
I've emailed the mount. We all came down and talked to a person down here.
And she emailed the mayor and the plant, Town Manager or the Town Planner. Okay. And we haven't really gotten any response back.
Nobody responds to any of it and we're just, they're in and out all night. They're stopping on the street, revving engines. They don't care if you're asleep. They don't care about anything.
They're very dangerous with their cars. They don't care if someone's coming, someone's walking. They've almost hit, they almost hit her house, our cars.
Yes, we have, yes, there is a, show them that camera thing.
The deputies just came in. Deputy Whitehouse, is he here? For the 511, have you, there is, you can call him directly.
Well, is there an ordinance also? Because I'll tell you what, this needs to be addressed. It's been going on for, for, I, you know, throughout Emmitsburg. I know I was down here years, years ago, about 2004, about this, about same thing because I was over, or anyway. Is there an ordinance? Because also, the landlords need to be held accountable for. I mean, they're having everybody in there and, and as I said, the trash isn't going out. They're hot, they're yelling, screaming. I mean, most, we're working or we're sick or something and, you know, this is a senior area, residential senior area really, really. I've lived in the house ever since I was raised in the house. I have a neighbor that's sick. She's, well, two doors down. She's, she's raised in her house. And, you know, the whole area is, we're residential.
The noise ordinance, we do, I think there is one, but it's, it's a, it's a very difficult to do. Kathy, do you have anything about the noise ordinance?
We brought forth a noise ordinance several years ago, the mayor and myself did, and it, it never got passed. There were some changes that needed to be made and, and it didn't get passed. However, we do have a disturbing the peace ordinance, but you also have, you know, state and county law for disturbing the peace as well that can be enforced.
But see, something needs to be addressed and you need to put, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but some kind of new ordinance because as I said, and it's known as quote-unquote a college town, and as I said, there's more and more students coming in into a residential area and as I said, we're seniors, we're, and, you know, we're trying, hey, we pay our taxes, we're trying to be a, abiding residence and stuff and, hey. It's not, it's, and, you know, and when you say something to them, talk about disrespectful. I mean, they get smart.
And the mount hasn't gone back to you?
I'm sorry?
No, no, no.
Mr. Sweeney, can I jump in for a second? Just a couple of things so you know, and number one, we're sorry that you're having this difficulty and number two, you do tell us what to do and we, we want you to tell us what to do and, and I'll share a part of it. When that noise ordinance had come forward, there were very few people like yourselves who were coming for, advocating for it. We heard from businesses and we heard from landlords, but at that time, we didn't hear from good people like yourselves and, and this is very good that we're hearing it.
Well, see, we didn't...
At that time, we didn't have a problem.
Understood, understood.
And plus, we didn't know that something was going to be coming.
Sure, okay.
I mean, did you advertise it or put it in?
It was, the normal advertisement had taken place, you know, on, on the papers and so on, but...
But, you know, as I said, every, it's getting, it's, it's getting worse and, hey, it's got to be done. And like, as I said, they're drinking and God knows what else over there.
So, you have some good options in front of you this moment and I'll share them with you so you, so you kind of have a heads up. Regarding this moment, procedurally, and I'm not trying to kill it in committee, but always call the police so there's a paper trail to document it, number one. Always do that. The, the second part is, we have a representative from the university, Mr. Kelly's here, who I'm sure would be happy to hear from you. And...
Wayne Green.
Wayne Green, I'm sorry, Green. Wayne Green, I'm sorry, Green, I'm thinking Kelly Green, sorry, little Irish on the brain, sorry. Mr. Green, sorry. And we also have the deputy here, so there's, uh.
And he's waiting to talk.
There's a means by which you can address it tonight, and we wanna hear how that process goes with you. And that, as the board, if you feel you're not satisfied with what's going on with town staff, and this is not talking to town staff yet, you know, we, we wanna advocate for you, so you have a high-quality standard of living. You know, regardless of whether you're a brand-new resident or you're a lifelong, you know, legacy family, but we, we want everybody to have that opportunity. So, you, you have Mr. Green, sorry, and you have the deputy here right now.
Because see, that's it, and, and you know, there's other things, like Patterson and all, well, anyway, and it's, you know, it needs to be addressed.
May I ask, may I ask a question? Do you, um, you wouldn't happen to remember off the top of your head who you contacted at the Mount, did you?
I don't remember, I emailed, like, the deputy.
Ken McCreary.
Emailed two people at the Mount, got a response, didn't get anywhere. Then we came down here, the three of us, and left a message with the young lady over here, and she gave the information to the mayor, and I'm not sure who else she sent it off to.
Okay, okay.
And it's just.
We haven't had anything, but.
They're almost hitting each other back and out of the driveway.
And of course, they're backing out, almost hitting my, um, house.
They hit my cousin's car, and almost tried to run, but her son was in the car.
See, and I don't, there's too many cars for that one house. I don't know how many students are in that, I should, students in a house, you know, and it's like, heck. And like, you know, sometimes you look out the windows, there's like, park.
But there is, there's a representative here from the Mount, and also Deputy Whitehouse is here, and if you have, he can maybe address the.
Thing is, like, if you call the, the, um, poli, well, anyway, three o'clock, how long will it take them to get up to Emmitsburg?
Uh, he can answer that, Mr. Whitehouse can.
But they're, they're often in town, like, so you, you might find the response times are, are pretty, pretty good. But still, what happens to help us in this process is if you call the police, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Sweeney, is this okay? I'm sorry, sir. If you call nine-one-one and, and make the incident report, that gives us hard empirical evidence, like, you know, this is irrefutable, that there have been issues in town related to this issue, and we can work, you know, regarding our side on the legislative side, we can work with the mayor, we can work with the university, and we can work with the deputies.
And I'd like to encourage everybody in Emmitsburg, if there's problems, they should call.
Because there's beer cans, there's glass, and you know, the, the children walk up and down, you know, to the school, because the school's right back there, and of course, the park. And of course, they're whipping around there, their, the speed is too.
They drive crazy.
Yeah, somebody's gonna, some, you know, child's gonna get hurt, they're in, it's, it's.
Okay, we'll try to address that with Deputy Whitehouse and, and if you can get their names and stuff.
I was just, one more thing, I just wanted to add, Mr., Mr. Green here, I, I personally, I had an issue myself, and I reached out to him, and he's very attentive to, to the situation, so you have a good, you have a good representative there. So he will, he will look into it.
I mean, talk about anxiety, it's getting, you know, you can't sleep, you can't, it's like, you hear the, the, um, car horns going off and the, um, lots, it's, and hollering, screaming, and they have their part, oh my.
If I might add, from the staff point of view, five-eleven West Main Street, now that there, we're aware of this, they will need to file a use and occupancy permit if it is now a tenant house, just as we have encountered with some other ones. And once they do that, they are required to provide so many parking spaces, and if they don't have enough parking spaces, the cars can't be there. So that's an enforceable thing that we can do now in the interim.
Because the place, right, which does not belong to that house, it's a mudhole, and as I said, and poor, um, the, um, mayor, well, anyway, it, they're, they're just hogging up the whole place.
Yeah, these are, these are things that we can certainly tackle now in the interim before a noise ordinance could be passed, or a rental registration program, or, or other avenues, you know, that the mayor and staff and the board are looking towards, but this is something that we can do now. So our plan, we'll look into that tomorrow.
Landlords are New York, Virginia, Pennsylvania, and they're not, you know, they just want their money, but hey, we're getting.
We have to live with it, right?
It's too much.
All right, and, and make sure the deputies see you on the way out, too, when you, when you guys leave, that way they can get your information and, and, and they know, they'll keep an eye on the, the business and stuff, too. If you wanna go on and speak in the hallway, that's fine, yes.
Mr. Sweeney, I think.
I wanna move on to the next agenda.
Okay, all right, okay, just so you know.
We, we spend a lot of time on the one thing.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Ashley. Okay. Dan Walter, or Ron Walter? You're not gonna speak, oh, you're gonna wait till the trailers, okay. Uh, Debbie, Diane Warbacher.
Hi, Diane Warbacher, five-thirty-five West Main Street. Hi, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, anyway, um, I just wanted to say I agree with Marie and my fellow neighbors, I live at five-thirty-five West Main. I haven't had any particular problems with five-eleven West Main yet, but I walk up and down that alley all the time, and my granddaughter and I picked up a whole trash bag the other day, and a lot of it was beer bottles and, and those little liquor bottles, so thank you for coming and, and saying something. So, but I also have had issues in the front of my house, and the police have always been very responsive, and have come right away when I, when I called and complained, so I would encourage them to take up that. I also wanted to say that the Christmas decorations that you guys did look great, very good, and I wanted to thank you for the charging stations, which I think is a real positive move, so, that's it.
Thank you, Diane.
Edward O'Donnell? Just give your name and your address.
Edward O'Donnell, one-six-two-one-nine Old Frederick Road, that's my wife.
Marnie, Marnie O'Donnell, same address. We actually, this is our first time here, and so we don't necessarily have comments right now, we're here specifically to hear the presentation about the healthcare center that the Mount and Frederick are gonna be, are partnering with, and our, and our two big, you know, two big themes are, where specifically is it gonna be? And even more importantly, what services are gonna be offered, 'cause there's some really exciting opportunities, you know, that we, that we perceive with the medical center, but as faithful Catholics, there's also potential, because, specifically because of the Mount partnership. There, there are other things that might happen there that, that would be a bigger issue, so we would, so we're looking, we're just looking for details and clarity at this point.
So if we will have an opportunity.
Will we have an opportunity to ask questions after the presentation?
Then maybe that'd be a better time.
Will the presentation applicants be asked questions?
Yeah, typically, if you have a topic, and just like with the trailers, they wanna wait and hold their public comment till that topic comes up.
Yes, you can ask questions.
So after the presentation, if they had public comment, they could have their four minutes to public comment.
And if you don't have questions, you just say pass. Okay, excellent, thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
That's all public comments we have for right now.
You have your deputy here, if you want him to give, I'm just talking with him right now.
Yeah, he's, he's, they're out in the hallway. We can do some administrative business, I guess, while we're waiting. We did the first one, the winners.
Now we're ready for Mount.
Before we get to present, I guess we can do the deputy first, let's do the presentation for the Mount, that way you guys can go ahead and won't have to stay for the rest of our meeting.
But you're welcome to.
But you're welcome to, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing? Got a lot of people in the crowd here that, with me tonight, I'm Don Schilling, Vice President of Ambulatory Services for Frederick Regional Health Services, so I'm presenting a little bit from the hospital side, and Simon Blackwell here from Mount St. Mary's, he and I are the tag-team leaders of this project to do the work. And I got some other people in the audience, if anything does come up question-wise, we might be able to answer it. So, I'll go, a little bit of background, about eighteen months ago, twenty months ago, Mount St. Mary's reached out to Frederick Regional Health and had a need with their Division One sports teams, and we were able to address those needs, and we talked about that being a Phase One type of initiation. That led into this past year, where we have just finalized, and you'll see here in the presentation a little bit, the coordination of their student health services on campus. And that will lead us hopefully into a additional phase, which is a community health center. That's a high-level overview. Community need and opportunity, from the regional healthcare system standpoint, the north end of the county's always been an area where we feel we have to have a presence and present more services in this end of the county. Over the past few years, we've been evaluating some of the needs up here, so we can start preparing, if we do need to address a facility up here, what we need to address. Some key areas for us is, of course, the, the key, one key area is that the thirty-five percent of the individuals, when they do use our hospital services, indicate they do not have a primary care provider. That is an opportunity for us to get involved and also provide a solution that if they don't want a primary care provider, how are we gonna provide services? And that will lead us to some other solutions, you'll see in a minute. Mount St. Mary's background, I went at a high level over this a little bit, we've entered into a five-year contract with them to basically coordinate their, their health services. You can see the items that we've already addressed there, and then the future needs that we will be looking at for the Mount will be their employee health care, so how can we help them with their additional employee coverage, as well as some sports medicine care for the non-Division One teams, and we're already working on that. This is a slide that talks about our, our care delivery, the Frederick Regional Health System, we use a patient-centered medical home care delivery framework that basically says we believe in the coordination of care. If you see us, all these areas, we've got to give you access points, urgent care, the behavioral health components, if necessary, what kind of retail operations might need to be involved. So, it's coordinated care, or it goes beyond the scope of just a provider. We have teams that work with care coordination throughout, if you need additional specialty referrals, how do we get you to those locations? If need be, how do we coordinate transportation issues for you? So it's, it's an expanded care delivery concept, and we would be implementing that here with this location. Phase one, as I talked about back in July of eighteen, we talked about the athletic program outline. We're into the Phase Two part, which is, well, Phase One, really. Planning of that is where we are now, what's the scope of those services? Where, what we need to provide for the community, and part of our initiative, we've had one community meeting up here, we're having another one later this month, we're here tonight to outline the project, so we can hear from you. If we've missed any services, we wanna put it into our planning, and to make sure that we can have a solution that's good for the community of Emmitsburg. In the fall of nineteen and forward, which we're planning now, is kind of the scope of services you see here, we'll be doing urgent care, primary care, we use a blended model in our delivery of primary care services. All that means is if you show up at our location, we'll be able to see you. If you're not a primary care patient, we'll see you as an urgent care patient, if you're a primary care patient, we'll see you as a primary care patient as a walk-in visit. We'll have scheduled events for any provider as well. We'll have radiology services, basic imaging services on-site, lab services, physical therapy will be provided at that location. We'll be able, through the patient-centered medical home, to deliver chronic disease management services. We'll have some means of behavioral health, our primary care operations, we have some basic behavioral health components, where we can offer assistance to patients when needed, as a coordinated care delivery system. If beyond that scope, we'll figure out from a facility standpoint, and maybe, you know, providing some additional services in that area, in this area, at the location that we finalize. Develop a look, this is not necessarily the building, but it'll be a medical-looking building that will be branded as Frederick Regional Health System.
Where will this be located? Do we know where this will be located?
I can, I can speak to that one.
Yeah, thank you.
So here's a more definite location, we, we need to be at the edge of the campus for Mount St. Mary's, because the, the facility is intended to serve both the Mount student population, again, the employees potentially at that location, as well as the community. So, once you leave the campus, it becomes problematic of how the students will access the facility. So, that's where the Mount has been gracious enough to work with us on a land solution at the campus site. Other community needs, we had one meeting, as I mentioned already, some of the people, the commissioners were at that meeting, and here are some of the additional items that came up from that meeting. Pediatric services, both from a primary and an urgent care type of delivery, OB-GYN services was brought up, geriatric care, transportation coordination was emphasized that evening, and access to health insurance and financial assistance. So, any of our physician, we do have an employed physician group, we do deliver our primary care services through that employed physician group, therefore, it's part of our not-for-profit healthcare system, and so we do have ways of coordinating financial assistance to patients if necessary. Finally, it's just really the idea is that we would have a solution here that would service both the students, the athletes, seminaries up at the Mount, employees and families, and the residents of the community, in a combined location that we could have up in the Emmitsburg area.
I have one question.
Sure.
So we have a lot of people that, if they go, let's say, to your facility and thank you for partnering with the Mount, because this is a need that we have in our community, and there's a need for them to go to Frederick Memorial Hospital, how do they get back? Because a lot of them are, don't have transportation, and I know that you guys used to have a way to get people who were maybe impoverished, didn't have transportation, back to their homes, but that was canceled. But is there some way that can be re-instituted, so that if they do end up going there, they can get back home? I was there driving to two in the morning to pick up a resident, and, you know, I work the next day.
I don't have the specific answer to that. As I said earlier, our coordinated care, patient-centered medical home model does address issues that you're talking about. So we just need to figure out how to best get that solution to this area, the patients are treating here. So hopefully, they'll be involved in our primary care operation, which a lot of the things of coordinated care come naturally out of that.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Commissioner Buckman, a, a question came up similar to that about the transportation piece, and it was the county who decided to provide and then now not provide that shuttle. One thing that came to light in these discussions was, the bus shuttle does not, or at that time, did not stop at the university. Now, that would add potential users, so maybe if we were to come back and pitch the idea to the county that, okay, we have this facility, but also we have this, you know, population of young people who wanna get down to Frederick, perhaps, for other services, it might not be provided here, that might be persuasive to them. But it's a, it's a county issue right now.
Commissioner Ritz, any other question? Anybody else have any questions? On the board? We have questions from the.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney, one other item? Just, just after this discussion, this came, someone brought this forward to me. Population, FCPS sports physicals and youth sports physicals, is that what you're including in what you categorize as retail clinics?
Well, actually, we provide both of those services, either through our primary care or urgent care solution. We typically, in the fall, when there's a lot of sports physical need, we usually, we even have a day where we basically say, you know, this Saturday, come and.
Terrific.
You know, for twenty bucks.
That's realistic to expect that that service would be provided in this facility?
Yeah, we'll probably do some in the north end of the county, and most of that activity is centralized around a single Frederick location, but we'll probably expand that up here.
Thank you.
We already do a, I think, a day-long for the Mount, so we can also look at how we might be able to tie into that.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
I'm Simon Blackwell, I'm a Chief Transformation Officer at the Mount, I'll speak to the location. So the cri, we've got five locations we've been looking at, I'll give you the criteria that we're using to evaluate the locations. The number-one criteria for us is student convenience and student safety. So we don't want students to have to do unsafe activities in order to get to the. So, we don't want students to have to do unsafe activities in order to get to the facility, and we want to make sure that the students use the facility. Number two is really, what's the traffic flow? What does it cause for the university in terms of additional traffic that might flow across the university or into the university, which dovetails with, is it convenient to the community, right? External to the university? We looked at five different, there's also cost things and that kind of stuff, but those are the primary drivers. We've also got other needs that we're trying to address on campus. We need to increase our academic space, we need to increase our dorm space, those kinds of things. So there's some competing needs that we have going on. As Mr. Schilling said, being on the periphery of campus is important so that we don't drive additional traffic across campus. One of the locations we looked at is on the south end of our campus, past the seminary. There's an empty lot there. But what would happen is we get a lot of cars driving across John Walsh Way in front of the university, which would cause safety issues and start driving more traffic that way. And we're already going to have issues with the rework of 15 that the state is planning to do in the next year. We looked at two pieces of property across the other side of 15. One of those pieces of property has no infrastructure in place, no electrical, no sewer, no water. It would take a long, long time to get it ramped up, and would probably require new on-and-off ramps for 15, or building a new road on campus. So it just becomes extraordinarily complex to deliver on it. The second piece of property, the other side of 15, is the higher competing need is for additional housing space for students. Additionally, the state has informed us, they'd rather have us not do things that would start more traffic running up and down 15 to get on and off, but we would then have to extend the off, the slowdown lanes, which is a problem for the state, so they'd rather us not do that. And both Emmitsburg representatives and our partners at Frederick have said they'd rather not have it on the other side of 15 because it's not really convenient to anybody over there, so that the traffic patterns are bad even for community people. That brings us back to two remaining pieces of property on this side of 15. As you come out of the north end of campus, right after you get off the freeway, if you turn right and head north, there's an athletic field there to the right that is generally used for club-type sports. There's some space on the side of that field that may be large enough to put this facility up. We're imagining it's going to be about 10,000 square feet. We're exploring that, but we know the size might not be big enough, and we also know we have drainage issues in that area because of an underground stream. The other possible piece of property, if you continue about 200 yards down that road on the left-hand side across from our cottages, we own the empty lot there, so there's a, that's a possibility. So we're down to those two lots right now, we have not made a final decision. Those lots are convenient to the students, they can walk from the dorms. Those lots don't bring up any real safety issues because of increased traffic patterns, and they happen to be the most convenient lots to people who live in Emmitsburg. They're the easiest lots to get to.
They don't have to enter the highway to get to.
They don't have to get into the highway. The folks coming up from Thurmont would get off at our main exit, they'd turn right, immediately be off-campus. People coming in from Emmitsburg would come down Old Emmitsburg Road. If people happened to come in from Tannytown, they'd be coming south on the highway, and they can get right off, just like the people coming from Thurmont. So it would make it easy. Commissioner O'Donnell spoke to the bus, the transportation issue. It's also an ideal location then for putting a bus stop, so that a bus could come through, could stop there, serve the general campus needs, serve the clinic needs, and go on into Emmitsburg from there, and perhaps turn around and come back the same way. So it's a conversation to have with the county. While I'm up, if I could just speak to the services. People should be aware that our master agreement with Frederick Regional Health System is that they have to comply with what are called the Catholic Directives for Health Care, which means we won't be dealing with beginning-of-life or end-of-life issues at the facility unless, of course, there's some type of emergency that has to be, has to be dealt with. But not any Planned Parenthood kind of activities, those kinds of things, at the facility. Yep. And we're open for questions now.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Jester around the mic, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, we had two signed up for questions for that.
Yeah. And I have to...
Yeah, you come right up here. Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so the first question is, in terms of services, who makes, who is going to make the decisions about the services offered? So, in other words, I know they mentioned there's a master, there's an agreement, but then at the end, Mr. Blackwell mentioned, well, unless there was an emergency situation. I'd just like some clarification about who makes the decisions about the services offered? Will, as they add services, how will, will the university be notified beforehand, or will there be a community comment opportunity? Speaking to the community meetings, I subscribe to the Frederick News Post, I read it every single day, I read the free Emmitsburg paper, the Thurmont paper, and this month was the first time that I saw anything about this facility or public comment, and I'd like to know how we can find out about these future community meetings. We do own property on Old Frederick, I mean, we live on Old Frederick Road directly across from the Ark. We're facing the Ark, so, you know, we consider that to have an impact on our quality of life as well. If they build anything in that open field, it would be nice to know what was going there and how to find out about it. And then, again, just going back to the issue of, I would like to know if there's a way to find out the names of the specific doctors or specialists who would be working at the center? It's a lot of really highly detailed questions about...
But I guess the most important thing is what, the agreement that was mentioned about that it would follow the Catholic, excuse me, the agreement that was mentioned that would follow the Catholic practices, end-of-life, beginning and end-of-life practices, is that going to be in place moving forward when decisions are made, when there's changes, you know, all throughout the process, not just now at the beginning? We'd like, you know, some feedback on that.
Who wants to answer that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, thank you for coming and asking questions and standing up. It's important we get as much feedback as possible. In terms of, how do we let people know? The public meeting that we had at the Mount right before the holidays really came out of having a first conversation here at this council meeting, and we said we're open to have a meeting the following week at the university. Our plan is to have a much more well-publicized and larger event later this, later this month. And we'll make sure as many people as possible know as in as many different ways as we can promote that. In terms of, you know, what do we do about beginning and end-of-life issues, Catholic directives? The seminary, we will, we will, we'll be forming a kind of management ethics committee around this, and there's a member of the seminary that will be on that committee. We actually have a nationally-known medical ethicist who works at the seminary. They'll be on the committee. It is in our legal agreement with the hospital, that, those practices will be followed, and it's our intent to keep that in the legal agreement. You know, the Mount itself would be challenged if we started moving outside of those bounds, challenged by the public, challenged by our alum, challenged by a large number of our students, and certainly challenged by the Archbishop who sits on our, on our board.
I have a question for you, if it's put in the location that you, on Old Emmitsburg Road, the furthest one down, we've been trying with the county and with the Mount to get pedestrian right-of-way all the way to town to connect where we have, especially with a lot of people in Emmitsburg do not drive, and be able to walk out to the services, or, you know, out to that area. I mean, if, I don't know how far along we, we have gotten with the pedestrian right-of-way situation down that way.
Mr. Green would be more informed on pedestrian right-of-way than I would.
I know, that was an initiative maybe 18 months or two years ago. I don't know what the current status of that is. I think this certainly adds some...
Adds to it, yeah, for the county.
Because it creates a destination, a service destination for it. I don't remember what the, I think it was cost inevitably that...
Yeah, it was a third, third, a third, you know, three different, Mr. O'Donnell?
Just to throw in, yes, cost was the main issue. The initial estimates were very low for what the actual expense was when it was first brought up. The other piece is, there's a question of property owners agreeing to access because the easement for Old Emmitsburg Road there is very limited. It's an older road, it didn't have the normal eas, well, it didn't have what we would consider a modern easement. So, there's not a large shoulder, there's not an area off the paved surface that would allow for a paved path. So, what would occur is discussions with property owners to allow something along their frontage for pedestrian access, and that's also been a bit of a stumbling block, as I understand it.
And I do know that, and this was now going back, I'd say, four years, was that they looked, and we all know what building bridges is like in Emmitsburg, that there's a bridge that is, needs adjustment in order to do it, and that was extraordinarily costly even if you only put in a pedestrian bridge, so.
It would be nice if, once it gets, the clinic gets put in, when the urgent care gets put in, that we do have pedestrian right-of-way coming from town. It would help for the Mount students coming back.
Yeah, we would, we would, I mean, we, like the town, would love to see that happen. The daughters would love to see that happen as well because of the spiritual connection between the two facilities.
So with this added facility, maybe we can get a little bit more push to the county, maybe we can see what we can do. Maybe the staff can look into that, maybe, Zack, maybe trying to get the pedestrian right-of-way thing moving again.
The mayor and a representative from the Mount ran it to ground, contacting, going door-to-door, and as well as contacting people along Scott Road to come through the fields, to come along Old Emmitsburg Road, and I believe they encountered at least two that absolutely were not going to grant any sort of right-of-way. And Mr. Blackwell's correct, that bridge is extremely expensive. You're talking about permits from MDE, construction, and then the funding with the county. They did commit to the funding, but we had certain deadlines that had to be met, the deadlines, it was not impossible to meet those deadlines, so the funding was reverted back to the county. The county executive has said if we can ever make it work, the county would still help pursue the project. But right now, we're at stalemates with right-of-ways. We, you can't force people to give them to you.
All right.
And, you know, Old Emmits Road is a county road, the town has no, no forcefulness to even work towards, you know, getting a right-of-way there. The county has to do that, and what they're willing to do, I don't know.
Is there any other questions for the Mount?
Just quickly on the scope of services, I mean, that's what we're doing right now, investigation of scope of services. So, we planned the initial primary care, urgent care service, who will be provided through our employed physician practice when it comes to specialty providers. We do have specialty practices inside of our employed group, but we also have a great working relationship with independent practices. So we'll be taking, after we do our initial evaluation, taking that out to our physician groups in Frederick, and seeing who has an interest in solving some of the needs of the area, so.
I do have one more question. Will there be a pharmacy going in there?
That is not something we typically do, but I know you have a local community pharmacy in town, and, you know, we wouldn't want to take anything away from that.
I didn't know if...
Mr. Sweeney, last question for myself. Perfect world scenario, assuming everything gets green-lighted and the scene is reasonable and appropriate, when would you anticipate the facility being open?
It would probably be open at the earliest mid, mid to late 19...
No, 20.
I mean, 20, yeah, mid to late 20.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we did just shift a year, didn't we?
Yeah.
Mid to late 20.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for the Mount, while they're here? Any other questions for anybody?
I have a question.
Yes, you have to, you have to come up to the microphone.
Is it possible to have...
I need your name and your address first. Your name and your address.
My name is Joanne Caldwell, and I'm at 208 East Main Street. Can this facility be right across the street from, or next door to FEMA? And there is urgent care in Thurmont, and, you know, we have a, at least one doctor in Emmitsburg. And also, why can't this be in the town of Thurmont or the town of Emmitsburg? Isn't that close enough? I do think it's important to have emergency preparedness, but we have FEMA, and certainly if we utilize prayer more and with faith, and we need to teach abstinence. We cannot have any birth control at, at all, or any prescriptions for birth control. We don't need any psychologists or psychiatrists because we do believe in adoration and listening to God and this community, and we have priests who can counsel. We certainly don't want any psychiatrists. The roads right there at Mount St. Mary's that touch the Mount are too narrow, there's too many horrible gullies. The county or the state does horrible roads out there. There's horrible gullies, there's erosion from the rocks and the mulch, and those roads are not good for ambulances or fire trucks or anything like that. Certainly, more people on Main Street in Emmitsburg would utilize something like this to go all the way out to the Mount. I mean, I do not drive on 15 whatsoever, fronting my car. Somebody stole my car engine during this state thing where you have to get your driver's license, and you have to go to a state-certified place, you know? So, my car, you know, and a lot of people who are living on widow's benefits like I do, we cannot afford good cars to go on 15. So we walk, you know, along Main Street and things like that, or, but we ride the backroads, and the backroads are horrible.
Ma'am, okay.
They're always very narrow, and they're just not appropriate, so...
The main reason they're building is for the Mount services first, their students and their, their Division One teams and stuff, but they're going to be, from what I understand, they're going to provide extra services for the town and the community as needed.
I know, but, you know, there's Thurmont, two and a half, three miles away, there's Emmitsburg, three miles away. I mean, certainly to open up a beautiful, holy Catholic university to all, to every Tom, Dick, and Harry and terrorist in the world is just ruining the whole effect of a good, holy Catholic university and seminary. I mean, why not have it in the town of Emmitsburg or the town of Thurmont, you know? Keep it away from ruining a good, holy place.
They have to put it on their piece of property.
Pardon?
They're putting it on their property they own. They don't own any property in town.
Well, you have enough bloodshed, we don't need more bloodshed with, you know, birth control pill, just take the baby off and kill them, and wellness like that.
All righty.
Which, you know, when you get psychiat, when you get the world in a Catholic place, that's the end of the Catholic place.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, yes.
Sorry, one more question, and actually, that is, that is a good point. Will they, will they be, will this healthcare facility be distributing or prescribing birth control, or, you know, like implants, you know, sterilization implants, or any kind of procedures like that, which technically, which, does this, does that also fall under the agreement that they have with Catholic practices?
I don't know, I have to, to the Mount.
Commissioner, we need to move on.
I am not an expert in the directives, they're, you know, many pages long, but my understanding is that doing those things would be inconsistent with the Catholic Directives for Healthcare. So, I'd suggest the first thing to do, to set your mind at ease the most, would be to, I can provide you the link, if you want to send me an email, I can provide you the link to the formal document, and you can actually see what's in the document.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for coming, and thank you for the presentation, and it was nice to see it because I missed, didn't get to the meeting, but thank you for coming. Deputy Whitehouse, we'll do the deputy report now, thanks for coming, and we'll move on to the next agenda.